This meeting will please come to order. Will the clerk read the call of the meeting and the return of service?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Duxbury Town Meeting Warrant. Duxbury High School, Middle School, 71 Alden Street. Plymouth SS, greetings to either of the constables of the Town of Duxbury in said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street, which has been continued today to the high school at 71 Alden Street. Okay. And said Duxbury on Saturday, the 14th day of March 2020, which has since been postponed to today, August 1st, 2020, at 9:00 in the forenoon for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, seven days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting, given under our hands this 10th day of February 2020. Board of Selectmen, David J. Madigan Chair, Theodore J. Flynn Vice Chair, Plymouth SS, February 19, 2020. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury herein described to meet at the time and place for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Mitchell LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
I want to start by thanking all of you for coming to this meeting so that we can conduct the important business of the town. Due to the COVID-19 virus, this year's delayed town meeting will be different in many respects from previous years. For instance, the chairs are all spaced six feet apart and participants are expected to wear masks. Those of you who are not wearing masks will be seated in the courtyard. The Town Manager, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee have worked to reduce the number of articles in the hope of speeding up this meeting. Before we begin, let me introduce the people you see in front of you in the hall. On my right, your left, is Betsy Sullivan, Chair of the Finance Committee, and Catherine Glynn from the Fiscal Advisory Committee. To my immediate right is the Town Clerk, Susan Kelly, and the Assistant Town Clerk, Linda Suvati. To my immediate left, your right, is Town Manager, Rainey Reed, and Town Finance Director, John Adams. To their left is Chairman of the Board, the Honorable David Madigan, and Ted Flynn, Selectmen. And finally, the lone person at the round table is Town Counsel. Friend Wyler and Paul Brogner have been sworn as assistant moderators and will help as necessary. We also have a special guest today with us, and that is our representative, Josh Cutler. And Mr. Cutler would like to come forward and present a resolution.
This is challenging with these... Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here. On behalf of our Duxbury delegation, bring the tidings of Senator Patrick O'Connor, Representative Kathy Lanatra. We are here to recognize someone who I don't think needs any introduction in the Town of Duxbury. It's just sad that he isn't able to be with us this morning, but very pleased that his son Kevin is here with us. I have a resolution I'd like to read. I can just tell you ahead of time, it was challenging to write. I used to be an editor in my olden days, and trying to squeeze everything I knew about Sean Dahlin into one resolution, all his accomplishments to the Town of Duxbury, was very challenging. So I hope we did justice, but I want to really thank, Kevin, I want to thank you for lending us your dad for all these many years. When I think about the impact that he's had here in Duxbury, in every, in this very school that we're in right now, every facet of our community is better today because of Sean Dahlin. And so, along with my colleagues, I'd like to read this resolution. The Massachusetts General Court congratulating Sean M. Dahlin on the occasion of his retirement from the Town of Duxbury. Whereas Mr. Sean Dahlin has faithfully, generously, and dutifully served the Town of Duxbury in countless ways over many decades. And whereas Mr. Dahlin demonstrated strong leadership throughout his career, serving the town as a member of the Board of Selectmen for 10 years, four of which as Chair, and on the Duxbury Bay Management Commission, the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority Advisory Board, and the Plymouth County Advisory Board. And whereas Mr. Dahlin tirelessly promoted the safety, health, and welfare of the residents of the Town of Duxbury, as a member of the Duxbury Board of Health, the Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust, the Duxbury Community Preservation Committee, the Highway Safety Advisory Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Fourth of July Committee, and the Duxbury Public Safety Committee. And whereas Mr. Dahlin has been deeply committed to educational and recreational programs and worked to protect the natural beauty of the Town of Duxbury through his role as a founder and the director of the Duxbury Bay Maritime School, as a former chairman of the Duxbury Conservation Commission, and as the former Vice President and Director of the Duxbury Beach Reservation, Inc. Whereas Mr. Dahlin's institutional knowledge, civic generosity, and passionate commitment to making the Town of Duxbury a better place will leave a lasting legacy and will be remembered for years to come. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts General Court hereby congratulates Sean M. Dahlin on the occasion of his retirement from the Town of Duxbury and further extends to him its appreciation for his exemplary leadership and dedicated service to the Town of Duxbury. And be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be forwarded by the clerk of the House of the Representatives to Sean M. Dahlin, adopted July 16, 2020, signed by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, Stephen T. James, Clerk of the House, adopted in the Senate in concurrence on July 16, 2020, signed by Karen Spilka, President of the Senate, Michael Hurley, Clerk of the Senate, and offered by myself, Senator Patrick O'Connor, and Representative Kathy Lanatra. A copy of this resolution is read into the record, the official record, the General Court, and will live on as a permanent legacy to the significant and really truly amazing accomplishments of Sean Dahlin. I'm going to get a little emotional, but I'm going to stop here. But we really want to thank Sean for all his work, and Kevin, through you, just want to send our love to your dad.
The Board of Selectmen is one person short because Sean Dahlin has retired from the Board, and it's been a great loss for all of us that... Oh, and it's been a loss for all of us. I think Ted and I have served now with Sean, Ted, for about nine and a half years. I served with him for eight and a half years. And I have to say, one of the big driving forces of everything that gets done in this town is Sean's tremendous involvement and input into everything that we try to do. And we have a resolution here, but no way does it represent the amount of thanks and gratitude that we have to Sean for his long service to the Town of Duxbury. This is a resolution to honor and recognize Sean Dahlin, whereas Sean Dahlin served with distinction as a highly regarded member of the Board of Selectmen from 2010 to 2020 and his Chair for four of those years, whereas Sean Dahlin's unwavering leadership saw the following large project come to realization: the new police station, remodeled upgraded fire station, a new nationally accredited senior center along with subsequent addition, a state-of-the-art co-located high school/middle school, and a new regional dispatch center, all of which were launched in Duxbury in providing the community with the most up-to-date and efficient services. And whereas Sean Dahlin has been one of the most dedicated and consummate advocates of this town, that he has grown up in and calls home in order to make it a better place for the generations to come. And whereas Sean Dahlin, for over 30 years, served many, many boards and committees, including the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, the Affordable Housing Trust, Duxbury Bay Management Committee, Plymouth County Advisory Board, and many other outside groups, most importantly, the Duxbury Beach Reservation and Duxbury Bay Maritime School, just to name a few. And as a public servant, Sean Dahlin truly listened to all sides of an issue, offered his expertise and his in-depth historic and institutional knowledge in order to provide thoughtful conversation and decisions, all in the best interest of the town and the residents he served. Therefore, be it resolved on this day, first day of August 2020, the Town of Duxbury through its Board of Selectmen offers Sean Dahlin its grateful appreciation for his leadership and heartfelt thanks for his many years of dedicated service to the Town and all of its employees. So, Kevin? This is with real gratitude.
Today we will be... Am I heard in the back of the room? Raise your hand. Thank you very much. Today, we will be using four locations, if necessary: the high school gym, the middle school gym, which is right next to us, the cafeteria, and the courtyard for individuals without masks. All the locations have audio and video, however, due to a technical problem, only this room, the high school gymnasium, are we able to do electronic voting. When it comes time for a vote, I will be asking people to vote electronically, and I think many people have done this before. It's press 1 for yes, 2 for no. But the people in the room next to us will be voting by raising their hand. And so, please don't be confused when I say it's time to vote. People in this room will pick, choose yes or no. People in the adjoining room, I will ask them to raise their hand if it's yes, and then later we'll count it as no. When it comes to a majority vote, comes to any of the votes, I will ask the moderator, and we're connected via radio, how people have voted. If the assistant moderator in the next room believes that it was a majority vote, he'll so declare. If it has to be hand-counted next door, we can do that as well, and we will do that if we feel uncomfortable in being able to make that declaration. On the other hand, if seven individuals believe that it should be hand-counted, it will be If you wish to speak, you need to come to the microphones, and they are boom microphones located on my right and on my left in the front of this room; they are not in the remote rooms. Assisted listening devices are available out in the area where you checked in. The fire marshal has requested that you make a note of the fire exits in this room, and please do not block these exits by standing or placing anything such as chairs in front of them, as the seating capacity for this room will be strictly enforced. I request that all cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session unless you are a public safety official. For your information, this meeting is being taped. A couple of procedures I'd like to mention before we actually start the meeting. I'd like to review with you that the following. Upon checking in, you were issued a handheld device. If you have a ticket to sit in this room, if you have an issue with your voting device, please go to the teller's desk and they will help you with it. Voting process will be as followed. After the debate is over, I will call for a vote. The light on this cube will glow, and you will have 20 seconds in order to vote. When the 20 seconds have passed, I will announce that the vote is closed and the light will turn red. And my past experience is that people get very used to voting electronically, and that 20 seconds becomes a shorter period of time, and that's not a bad thing. Use your handheld device, press 1 for yes, 2 for no, and if you wish to change your vote, you just need to press the correct button while voting is still open. That was a special delivery. I believe that's Mrs. McNabb. I have trouble hearing you. Could you step to a microphone?
They can't hear you, John.
Oh, well, that's fine. Frankly, not being able to hear me is something I'm not used to hearing. So I will do my very best to use my town meeting voice, and is that any better? Much better, thank you. I do have trouble hearing people out in the far distance, so please, if you need to bring up a point of order or have us an important question, feel free to make lots of noise to get my attention. As you were notified, we very shortly will be having a special town meeting within the annual town meeting. It's to deal with some items that are needed to be dealt with immediately. Back when we first posted this in March, it made a lot more sense, but since we're dealing with warrants that were originally intended and meetings intended to happen in March, we will follow that order. The warrant for that special town meeting is out in the hallway. If you have a copy of it, if you need a copy of it, please go get it. Upon completing the special town meeting, we will then resume the annual town meeting. There is also a second special town meeting, and I want to point out that that will happen at noon time. It is for the so-called Harrington property, the purchase of a large tract of land in western Duxbury. That will happen at noon time in its own special annual town meeting, so, special town meeting. If that is what you're here for, you need to wait until noon time. It will not be moved up. At this point in time, at town meetings, we customarily ask for your permission to allow non-voters, such as town employees and officials who are not registered in the Town of Duxbury, to vote, and so I will entertain a motion to allow town employees and other officials to speak should the occasion arise. I hear a motion and a second, and this will give us an opportunity to try voting. So, if people in the main gymnasium, please take out your, please take out your voter... Ready? So that it's green, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. And if you are in the middle school, please raise your hand for yes when we come to the... when voting is...
We have unanimous vote in this room.
Thank you. And in this room, we have 72 yes and 7 no, so the motion passes. Unless I hear some objection, I will treat this vote as your permission to use for these people to speak at the special town meetings if the occasion arises. So I believe the question is, if you saw a circle with a bar through it, is that good news? And the answer is no. It means it's not working.
I keep pressing. I had the same issue, and it took me a few times.
So I'm going to ask if that happens. You push it a second time, and can we have a non-binding test vote at this point in time? So please, open up a vote. This is for nothing in particular, but I'm going to ask everybody to, 1 for yes, 2 for no. If you push it and it's working, and you voted yes, you'll see a 1 with a slash and an A next to it. If you don't see that, you're having a problem. Is everybody's... I'm seeing some yeses. If you're still getting that error notice, please raise your hand. We have several people who are having an issue. Mrs. Kelly, you suggest that they go to the...
They can come to me, and I'll give them another one.
Yes, please go to the service desk in the hallway, and you will get a different device.
If you press it a couple of times, it works. Yeah, so if they've tried it a few times, and it's still not working...
So, voting is still open. If you have a device that doesn't appear to be working, would you press the button, I guess, repeatedly?
If you press, I have one app, it says channel. It will then...
It took me a couple of times, too, but it kind of worked.
One, channel, and then if you want to...
Clear, say...
Good thing, clear.
Aye. What I'm hearing, and this actually sounds familiar from past years, if you hit the bottom left-hand button, the very bottom where it says "channel," and push it, you will see the light flash colors, and then if you push the button... And then if you push the 1 or 2, it will work. I believe we had this at a previous town meeting, and the issue was, if these sit idle long enough, they go to sleep. We needed to wake them up. These devices were prepared earlier today. They were sanitized and put in the individual packets and wrapped in bundles, and I think they may have gone to sleep. We will give Mrs. Kelly a few minutes, too. I have to admit, I need to thank you for being as patient as you are, and I'm looking at the school superintendent as I speak to you, and I suspect that he's not used to having this many of his students in this room with this kind of issue going on, being as well-behaved and patient, so... So perhaps he can use this as a model of how he would like all of his students to behave when things don't go quite as smoothly as we'd like.
Don't count your chickens, though.
Mrs. Sullivan has suggested that this is, may not last forever. We are still getting votes coming in, so I will continue with some of the procedures, and then we'll make a decision as to whether or not we'll be using electronic voting or asking you to raise your hand. This meeting is covered by the statutes of our town bylaws and town meeting time. In addition, I suggest that we abide by the following procedures so that we conduct the business in an orderly fashion. After I've announced that we are considering an article, the article will be moved by the Finance Committee, and their recommendations will be heard. I will then give the proposer of the article the opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. In those cases where there's an organized or recognized opposition to the article which has been identified to me, I will give the opponent of the article an opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. Upon completion of these remarks, the matter will be open to the general public for debate. If you wish to speak, I request that you go to one of the two microphones. After you've been recognized by me, will you please identify yourself by name and street address? I request that speakers limit their remarks to a maximum of five minutes, and ask that speakers do not attempt to be recognized for a second time on the discussion of any article until every other person who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so for the first time. Any lengthy or complicated motions or amendments should be submitted in writing so that we can know precisely what it is that is being voted on, and so that we maintain an accurate A couple of other procedures I want to bring up. One is the motion for the previous question, or sometimes known as move the question. Motion for previous question is a motion to end debate. It takes a 2/3 vote. It is a useful motion at town meetings, but there are some concerns that it may not be used fairly. To that end, we will have two procedures that we will follow. I will not accept a motion for the previous question from somebody who has just finished speaking on an article, eliminating the motion for the previous question to be used as a vehicle to get the last word. A second procedure is I will not allow a motion for the previous question until we have first had the article introduced, the fincoms motion, and an opportunity for people to start debate on it. After hearing these opening remarks from proponents and opponents, the article will then be open for general discussion. After some period of general discussion, a motion can be made. Reconsideration is the second motion that often comes up at town meetings. Reconsideration in Duxbury requires the same quantitative vote as the original motion. It needs to be made at the same session as the original motion, and it's my sincere hope that we have no continuing session of this town meeting. It may be made only once, and a motion to reconsider may only be made if the proponent provides, in the opinion of the moderator, factual information that was not available when it was originally taken up. I will now entertain a motion to recess this annual town meeting and adjourn this special town meeting, which was until the adjournment of the special town meeting that was called for, for this date.
So moved. Second.
So we're going to try a vote again. We're going to try an electronic vote. All those in favor of recessing the annual town meeting so we can go into the annual town, to the special town meeting, press 1 if you're in the main gym, 2 if you're opposed.
John, it's the channel, it seems to clear it, and then the one to work.
And I actually jumped the gun. The cube is red. When the cube turns green, we will be open. We're now open for votes. 1 for yes, 2 for no. And if you're in the middle school gym, raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. Mr. Wyler?
Room 2, votes in the affirmative.
Are people... Are people still having, if you're having a problem, raise your hand. We have one, two, three, four. So, given we've taken two votes, and we've had some issues with them, and doing it by hand seems to go a whole lot faster, I'm going to suggest the obvious, and that is, we're going to do this by hand in the main gym. And if we work out the technical problems, we will use this, we will use it when it comes time for a counted vote, if there's a question. Does that seem to work? Do we have general agreement? We will now reconvene the special town meeting that had previously been called way back in March and postponed to this date. Mrs. Sullivan, may I have a motion under Article One of the special town meeting?
Article One, subject supplemental appropriations. I move that the town indefinitely postpone this article. Second.
We have a motion, second. Is there any explanation or question? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement of Article One, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the main gym.
Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Have an affirmative vote in room two.
Motion carries. Article number two, unpaid bills. May I have a motion?
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,218.10 to pay the following unpaid bills of previous fiscal years, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sums as follows. Line one, Duxbury Clipper, from Planning Department, the amount is forty dollars. Number two, Rico, Central Buildings, forty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Number three, Municipal Graphics for the Police, that would be $1,790. Number four, Rico, a separate bill for Municipal Services, ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents. And number five, Tiger Towing for Vehicle Maintenance, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Thank you very much. Do I have a, I would like to, I point out that the selectmen voted for this two to nothing, and the finance committee is in favor of it eight to nothing. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, I'm going, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the main gym. Mr. Wyler?
Unanimous vote in room two.
Unanimous vote, motion carries. Article number three, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article number three, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $22,700 for the purpose of paying for the digital photogrammatic concept previously approved under Article Number Six, Motion One, Item Two, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $22,700 from free cash. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the IT director. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Didn't know if he was walking to the microphone or not. Seeing none, I'll now ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the main gym. Mr. Wyler, we await your vote.
Mr. Moderator, room two, votes in the affirmative.
Motion carries. Article number four, motion number one.
Subject, fund collective bargaining agreements, union contract, Town of Duxbury firefighters. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $86,950 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Permanent Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, Local 2167, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $86,950 from free cash. Second.
We've had a motion and a second. We will now have a presentation from Mr. Reed.
No presentation, just answer questions.
Oh, I apologize. Are there any questions for Mr. Reed? Mrs. McNeil, come on up. McNabb, excuse me.
Okay. Sorry, it's a long way over here. So this is for the past year, so this was from, for the, it's already been expended money, so I'm trying to understand what the eighty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars is actually for as part of this contract.
Mr. Adams, Finance Director has an answer.
First, let's test this microphone. Has to be real close, okay, very good. So, the union agreements go over three years. It's fiscal '20, '21, and '22. So fiscal '20 is retroactive. So these monies are to fund retroactively the increases in the fiscal year '20, part of the collective bargaining unit agreements.
So this was, this was a deficit? This was an amount of money that we needed on top of something else to supplement?
It's not a deficit because it hasn't been paid until it's approved here at town meeting.
Okay, but this was on top of their contract for that particular time?
No, it is part of their contract currently to fund FY '20, '21, and '22, and if you approve it at this town meeting, then we pay it as it is in the contract. This has not been paid. This has not been paid. This would be retroactive, a 2% increase for fiscal '20.
Oh, so it's a 2% increase, retroactive, so this is an increase in that, in that contract?
For the pay of 2020, correct.
I think it would be super helpful if that was actually part of the explanation, so that I and others could understand that. Thank you.
Well, the explanation in the warrant was in March, so things had changed. That will happen a lot during this meeting, so at least we bring it up now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll now, seeing none, I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote in the high school gymnasium. Yes, Mr. Wyler?
Room two, votes in the affirmative.
Motion carries. Article four, motion number two.
Fund collective bargaining agreements, union contract, Town of Duxbury Free Library Employees. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $8,000 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Free Library Employees, Service Employees International Union, Local 888, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $8,000 from free cash. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll now ask for a vote. All those in favor of Article Four, motion number three, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym. Yes, Mr. Wyler?
Room two, votes in the affirmative.
Motion carries. Article four, motion number three, collective bargaining for Duxbury laborers.
Motion three, union contract, Town of Duxbury laborers. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $43,150 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Duxbury Municipal Employees, AFSCME Council 93, Local 1700, Duxbury DPW employees, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $36,900 from free cash and $6,250 from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings. Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Wyler?
Affirmative vote in room two.
Thank you. Motion carries. Article four, motion number four.
Union contract, Town of Duxbury Public Safety Dispatchers. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $19,150 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Police Dispatch Union, MCOP, Local 376A, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $19,150 from free cash. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym.
Moderator, we have an affirmative vote in room two.
Thank you. Motion four carries. Article four, motion five, Mrs. Sullivan.
Motion five, union contract, Town of Duxbury Police Commanders. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $9,900 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Duxbury Police Commanders Association, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $9,900 from free cash. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym.
Mr. Moderator, we have an affirmative vote in room two.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Article four, motion six.
Union contract, Town of Duxbury Police Patrolmen. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $45,400 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with the Duxbury Police Union, MCOP, Local 376B, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending July, June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $45,400 from free cash. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any question or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym.
Moderator, we have a unanimous vote in room two.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Article four, motion seven.
Union contract, Town of Duxbury Secretaries and Clerks. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $15,225 for the purpose of funding a collective bargaining agreement with Duxbury Secretaries and Clerks, SEIU, Local 888, for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $14,665 from free cash and $560 from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise their hand. All those... All those opposed, raise your hand, please. We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym.
Mr. Moderator, we have an affirmative vote in room two.
Thank you very much. The motion carries. Article number five, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town indefinitely postpone this article. Second.
We have a motion, a second to indefinitely postpone. Seeing no questions, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, raise their hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have a unanimous vote in the high school gym.
Boy, we have a question here. Please hold.
Thank you very much. We have a question, and we've been asked to hold. I think that means we have somebody making their way from the middle school gym to
Here we now have an affirmative vote in room two.
Motion carries. Article six.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $104,746 to the Special Education Reserve Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $104,746 from free cash. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the school committee.
We have had a motion and a second. Is there any question or debate from, to be heard? We do have somebody making their way to the microphone. Stand on the X.
All right, I was looking up, not down.
I've wanted to say this all morning, X marks the spot.
Hi, Colleen Brer, Toby Guard Street. I just wanted to get some more explanation on this, please.
And who would like to answer that?
I can answer.
Mrs. Sullivan.
When this fund was created, we had made a, well, in my case, a gentle woman's agreement with the schools, that any funds that were returned to the town at the end of a fiscal year would then be transferred to this fund at the next available town meeting. And I say it was that type of an agreement because, once it was returned to the general funds, the school committee lost control of those monies. But we had made, we had made a commitment to them that any monies that were turned in at the end of a fiscal year were then, the next year, added to this fund.
So, I'm sorry, what are the funds being returned from?
Their budget of that year.
The school's budget, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, raise their hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. It is unanimous vote here in the high school gym.
Mr. Moderator, unanimous vote in room two.
Motion carries. Article number seven.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars to the Pension Reserve Fund. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of ninety-one thousand five hundred from free cash to such fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Uh, you're, Mr. Moderator? If I can speak to this motion?
Mr. Adams.
Uh, and I want to speak to this motion and subsequent motions. In Articles seven through eleven, the town seeks to put aside enough in the town's specific reserves to adhere to the town's fiscal policies. I could do that. In Articles seven through eleven, the town seeks to put aside enough in the town's specific reserves to adhere to the town's fiscal policies and objectives. The town of Duxbury's fiscal policies were last updated and adopted by the Board of Selectmen on August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The policies include various best practices and benchmarking to provide performance measures that the town can readily use to make sure it is adhering to its objectives. Reserves are an important part of the town's resources, and the primary objective of the town's reserve policy is to provide the town with flexibility to sustain service levels despite the adverse financial impacts of economic downturns and unforeseen extraordinary expenses, unlike we're seeing now. You will find the explanation of each article, the purpose of each reserve, and the December thirty-first amount in each reserve, and the amount needed to place in each to achieve compliance with the policy. Since there, since we've, the warrant was done in March, I will provide you with updated balances as of June thirtieth. So, in the Pension Reserve Fund, the amount was one million four hundred and five thousand four fifty-three. The minimum required under the policy was ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars. For Article eight, under the OPEB Fund, the June thirtieth balance was two million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and the minimum required under the policy is three hundred thousand dollars. Under Article nine, Transfer to Accrued Liabilities and Compensated Absences, the current June thirtieth balance is fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. The minimum required under the policy is two times the five-year average, which is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And number ten, the Transfer to Unemployment Trust Fund, the June thirtieth fund balance was a hundred and eighteen eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, and the minimum required under the policy is two times the five-year average.
Thank you. Any questions? I think I heard a yes. Oh, if you could introduce yourself again, just for the record.
Hi, Colleen Brer, Toby Garden Street. I'm glad you just did that, because that's mostly why I came to find out how we were doing. When you say the minimum, is that an annual addition to the fund? Or are you saying that's what the fund's minimum should be?
That should be the minimum, but it's appropriated annually to refund the fund.
I believe we have another question coming.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy McNabb, two sixty-nine Old Toby Garden Street. The question I have is, why are these, if they're annual appropriations and a requirement, why are they in the special? Why aren't we, why aren't we having these in the annual?
The requirement, why is it done in the special? It's usually done in the special so that we can come to compliance with our policy, with our fiscal policy objectives at June thirtieth. So, if the monies are put into the funds, then they're, then they're going to be in compliance with our policy.
Okay, so it's my understanding that these are required to be in the special? Because I know that, you know, there's been a big effort over the years to try to only use the special for unanticipated articles that aren't able to be vetted and considered more fully in the full, in the annual warrant. So, I appreciate that these need to be in the special. Thank you.
And, thank you very much. And just as an editorial comment, some of these articles do seem a little strange where they are being placed and how we're talking about them. But I ask you to remember that the meetings were originally posted for March. And what we did was actually convene and continue the meeting until today. And so, the warrant that we're working with has been frozen in time since last March. Were we to put this together today, we would, might drop some of the articles. Some of them wouldn't be necessary, and all of them would be in a, in a single warrant. But again, we're dealing with, with warrants that were created for a March town meeting and meetings that have been continued until today. Are there any other, are there any other questions? See, seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, and even though we talked about a number of Article, whoop, you're ahead of me. But thank you. All those in favor of Article number seven, even though we talked about a number, they're all separate votes. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote here in the middle school.
High school.
Mr. Moderator, we have a vote in the affirmative in room two.
As this is a majority vote, motion carries. Article number eight, please.
I'm sorry. Technical. Number eight, John?
Yes, please.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, otherwise known as OPEB. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of three hundred thousand from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Are there any additional questions about the OPEB Fund? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand.
I believe there's a question coming.
John?
I'm sorry, Mr., whoop.
Question coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wyler, and we have that individual.
Sorry, I didn't get here early to get in this room. What is our liability at this point? I know you said how much was in the fund and how much we contribute each year, but what is our liability? And I think it, um...
It is mentioned in the warrant, and that accrued liability is done every two years. So, that number, those numbers are still good in the warrant.
And it would be?
I'll have to look at the warrant.
By the time I find it in the warrant, okay, you guys want to wait while I?
I'll get it.
Thank you.
Uh, current liability was, uh, June thirtieth, eighteen, was thirty-two million seven hundred and four thousand zero-three-zero.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's try the vote again. All those in favor, please raise their hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote here in the high school gym?
Mr. Moderator, we have a unanimous vote in the second room.
Thank you, Mr. Wyler. As we're moving through this, I see we have a number of empty seats here in the high school gym. If people in the middle school gym would like to move over to the, over here, they're more than welcome. Article number nine, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Accrued Liabilities and Compensated Absences Fund. And to meet said appropriation, transfer two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from free cash to such fund to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of Article nine, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The, the eyes have it, the motion carries. Article number ten.
I move that the town...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm...
Oops, sorry.
Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Wyler. Mr. Wyler?
Two votes of the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for out of sight, out of mind. Article number ten, please.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand to the Unemployment Trust Fund. And to meet said appropriation, transfer two hundred thousand from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Do we have any questions about the stabilization fund?
Unemployment.
Unemployment. Unemployment fund. Mr. Moderator.
Let me try that again. We are on Article number ten. I do understand it's the unemployment fund. It was a slip of the tongue. But now that we're all back on the same page, that being me, I will ask for a vote on Article ten, the unemployment fund.
Well, I, a statement. I just wanted to specify, since the warrant was done in March, we had originally, back in March, wanted fifty thousand. But subsequently, we are looking for two hundred thousand because the COVID-19 reimbursable bills at the state have been suppressed until July twenty-twenty, and we have a current obligation at June thirtieth of about two hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, for that cheery news. Are we ready, are we ready for a vote now? I think we are. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote here in the high school gym?
Moderator, we have a unanimous vote in room two.
Motion carries. Article number eleven, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article number eleven, I move that the town indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Unanimous vote in the high school gym?
Room two votes in the affirmative.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wyler. Article number twelve.
Article number twelve. I move that the town appropriate the sum of seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one as follows. Amount, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Wadsworth Shared Septic. Annual Town Meeting, three thirteen ninety-nine. Article thirteen. Fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Senior Center Parking Lot. Annual Town Meeting, three eleven two thousand six. Article six. Nine, uh, one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Powder Point Bridge. Annual Town Meeting, three ten twelve. Article twenty-seven. One thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Cemetery Expansion. Annual Town Meeting, three eleven sixteen. Article six. Thirty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Replace Pumper Engine Number Three. Annual Town Meeting, three eleven two thousand seventeen. Article six, motion two. Nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Senior Center Expansion. Annual Town Meeting, three ten eighteen. Article seventeen. For a balance of seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see Mrs. McNabb on her way to the mic. And if anybody else is interested in a question, please get in line.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate this, that the purpose of this article obviously is to save us money in the long run by spending some money in the short term. But in the heels of the previous article, which was Article eleven, which I'm always looking forward to, believe it or not, which is to add money into our savings account, which I see we IP'd. I'm concerned about where our stabilization fund is going to be at the end of this. And I'm hoping that the Finance Committee can kind of keep us apprised of that as we go and as we spend money here at this town meeting.
Will do.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have a majority, I'm sorry, we have a unanimous vote here in the high school.
Mr. Moderator, we have an affirmative vote in the second room.
Motion carries. That completes the business and warrant for the special town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Sani Dieh.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of, of adjourning the special town meeting, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have a unanimous vote in the high school.
Mr. Moderator, we have a unanimous vote in room two.
Very good. Motion carries. That completes the business and the warrant for the special town meeting. And now, we will reconvene where we left off. Mrs. Sullivan, may I have a motion for Article number one?
Article number one, election. Article one was simply a notice to inhabitants of the coming election, which already occurred on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. As always, no vote is required.
Second.
Thank you. Article number two.
I move that the town receive the reports of town officials, boards, committees, and commissions.
Second.
Mr. Reed, do we have any reports to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Copies of a report from the Technology Committee were made available to the public out front. You can have, you're welcome to take a copy of that, which describes what our IT initiatives are for the coming year. In addition, the Fiscal Advisory Committee has also provided copies of their report. Both of those reports, if there aren't enough hard copies, are available on the town's website online. Thank you.
Thank you. Article number three, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town fix the compensation of the elected town officers for the twelve-month period beginning July first, two thousand twenty, as set forth in the column entitled, Finance Committee Recommended FY twenty-one, as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions for Article number three? Before we proceed, it's been pointed out to me that we need to vote on Article number two, which was the reports that you received. So, we're going to freeze where we are now. I want you to, in your mind, think back to Article number two. Mr. Reed just mentioned some reports that you can pick up on the counter. And so, I would like, if you're in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. We've gone back to Article number two. We never voted on it, even though we did receive the two reports that, that Mr. Reed mentioned. And so, I'm now asking for a vote on Article number two, to receive the report... And so, I'm now asking for a vote on article number two, to receive the reports that were spoken about. All those in favor of receiving those reports, please raise your hand. All those opposed. We have a unanimous vote to receive the reports here in the high school gym.
We have a unanimous vote in room two.
Well, it's nice to see we're all on the same page. Motion carries, article number three, which was the, which we paused for a second, which is the compensation of elected officials.
John, I did not read what those compensation numbers were. Would that be appropriate to enter into the record?
Those numbers are in the warrant.
Okay.
Having said that, if you would like to share that with us, feel free.
No, no, I'm fine. I just double checking.
The motion specifically mentions that it is the numbers set forth in the warrant.
That's fine. I just, you know. Just trying to behave.
Seeing no questions. I'm going to ask for a vote on article number three, compensation of elected officials. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. We have a unanimous vote here in the high school gym.
Mr. Moderator, we have a unanimous vote in room two.
Excellent. Motion carries. Article number four, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article number four, funding of salaries. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $115,575 to implement the personnel policy and provide funding for any other salary or compensation not addressed by the personnel policy, as printed in the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $111,475 and transfer the sum of $4,100 from water retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question about the timing of this article and the increases in the maximum amount of the pay scale for different pay grades. In light of COVID and in light of the upcoming financial crisis, I think we are all expecting, I'm wondering if it is not more appropriate to consider those increases at a later date and simply move this article along using the previous minimum and maximum pay scale? Could someone speak to the urgency of this article and why we're not deliberating on it at a later date?
Do we have an answer? Mrs. Horn, our HR Director, will be speaking.
Good morning. I'm Human Resources Director, Jeannie Horn, Seven Buckboard Road. Similar to what we've heard earlier, this is an article, that's an annual article. I understand the context that we're talking about at this moment in time. I think what's important to recognize is that, of course, this is a difficult time for everyone, and there are challenges. But what I would encourage people to do is to look at this article across the organization. So, if we were to consider what Ms. McNabb proposed, there are 80 non-union employees who would be negatively impacted in an inequitable way. So, we have a universal system of compensation that includes the schools and the town, and there are several unique compensation systems within those systems. So, if we were to indefinitely postpone this article, we would be adversely impacting a specific group of non-union employees, whereas the entire compensation system is not being considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. I'm sorry, the air over here makes it hard for me to hear everything. And I think what I'm hearing you say is that this would negatively impact a certain employee, which I'm not looking to do. It's my intention here, I think generally my problem with this is that it's the maximum amount on the higher-end pay ranges that I am most concerned with. You know, once we go up, we never can come down. And I'm also not saying that those aren't completely appropriate in some cases. I am simply saying that in this time, in this crisis, when we're all sitting here putting ourselves at risk, is this the time to pass these kinds of increases? I think not. I think that it should stay at a length, I know that my job isn't giving me a raise right now. We're lucky to have jobs out in the private sector. So, I'm simply saying, maybe this is not the time to increase that high end.
Thank you.
John?
If I could?
I'm sorry.
Could I move that we, for article four, that we allow for this article to pass, but using the prior year's salary minimums and maximums?
So, Mrs. Sullivan, what was it you wanted to speak to?
I just wanted to make it clear to the voters that this is not- Sure, sorry about that, guys. I just didn't want to sit, but I will. I wanted to make it clear that these were not automatic raises that are being offered to these folks, that this is merely the framework under which these jobs are valued. We have also been concerned about raises and costs. I mean, this is the most bizarre town meeting in a period of time that I've seen in, you know, I was trying to figure out how many town meetings I'd been to, and I know it's over 30. Amy and I might be in a horse race for that. The, we are going to be, and I will refer to this later, but we will be working with the town manager and the selectmen before raises, any raises are given. So, we are not, this is not an automatic raise to folks. Jeannie, do you want to clarify that? This is just a result of all of the work that we're doing on a professional level to codify what these jobs are worth and to stay current. So, I just wanted to be clear that we're not actually spending money on this, I don't believe.
Before we do that, we have, I need to deal with a request to make a motion over here.
I did move to amend this article.
You moved to amend. We have a motion and a second. And without anything in front of me, are we clear about what your amendment would do? So, you're asking to freeze?
My purpose, my intention here is to pass this article to fund these jobs, obviously, but to keep the minimum and maximum pay levels at the same rate as previous years, and we could consider this at a later date. And I would also add that that is also in light of article 16, which is in this town meeting warrant, because we are being asked to, again, appropriate funds to look at that overall personnel plan and the funding of the municipal jobs.
So, Mrs. McNabb, do you have the warrant with you?
I do.
So, is it your intention, as I look at page nine, where we have struck out the maximum and come up with a new number to really stay with the numbers that have been struck out?
Correct.
Okay.
So, in other words, grade 10 would stay at the $143,920 maximum amount. For now. I'm not saying that this doesn't increase, and maybe article 16 study would warrant that.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. We have some, bear with me for one minute. We have somebody who I think can provide some light on this.
And maybe along with Jeannie, too. But, so, a year or two years ago? Putting myself at risk. So, about two years ago, they separated out the wage and classification for non-union personnel salaries into two things. There was, one was the actual plan document that you're talking about, with the minimum range and maximum range. And that would be done through public hearing and approval by the Finance Committee. The second portion of that would be funding the merit increases for that, and that would have to be done at a town meeting. And that only refers to the funding source, so not the actual document itself. So, the document and the funding of salaries for non-union personnel are now two separate and distinct things. Does that clarify that?
And this article is funded.
This article is just funding.
So, this article, Mrs. McNabb, it's your question.
I think that, I understand what you're saying, but I'm still suggesting that we not fund that higher portion. I understand what you're saying, but I'm, my heart is in the same place.
Right. So, your amendment would just be to make these amounts zero?
No. I'm suggesting that we fund this is prior years. We fund the minimum, we fund the amount of these contract, this pay schedule inconsistent with previous years and not the increase at this time.
Again, you're referring to a pay schedule that's not included in this article. It's just amount of money. And this amount of money is over and above, it's just a pool of money of which to provide merit increases? So, if this pool of money doesn't exist, nothing changes. They get paid what they always get paid.
Oh, okay. So, you're saying that this, I thought you were saying that by making this amendment, I would fund this, there would be zero funding available. That is not my intention at all.
Right. It just would not provide a pool of money for merit increases, period. Everybody still gets paid what they currently get paid. If you move this to zero.
Just for clarity here. There are two things going on here. Article four is funding the personnel policy. The next article 16 is setting the personnel policy for fiscal year '21. So, that's the difference between these two articles. This one is just putting the money aside, and the other one is where we discuss the change in the personnel policy.
I think that the, we're out of order then here. It certainly seems to me it would have been more consistent to talk about article 16 first if, in fact, those increases in the maximum amount are in article 16 to discuss. Because I, again, at this time, in our financial crisis in this town and in this country, don't feel that it's appropriate to raise that top number at this time. And so, my intention here is to try, and if there's another way to do it, an amendment with 16 or to address it then, I'm certainly willing to do it then.
Mr. Reed, perhaps you can shed some light on this?
Well, sure. Don't all start laughing at once. Article 16 is totally separate and distinct from this. And it shouldn't be commingled with it at all.
Right.
Because that deals with a separate compensation study. Has nothing to do with article four.
Okay.
It would in a future year, but not this year. This, under article four, as I understand what you're saying, Amy, you want to eliminate the underlying salary lines and go with the struck-through salary lines for the ceilings, correct?
Correct, correct.
That's what she wants to do.
Seems straightforward to me.
There's also a funding component to this, too. Years ago, town meeting used to actually approve the entire personnel plan. In talking to town council with this over the years, we realized that that was not the purpose of town meeting. The purpose of town meeting isn't to amend the personnel bylaws, it's to fund the salaries. They deal with the money aspect, not so much, you know, who gets a day off and what, things like that. So, we refined it, and we've, I think we've perfected it to this point. So, now we can actually discuss the money part, which is precisely what you're doing. But what this also does, with the struck-through and the underlying language, it goes a step further, and it also adds and modifies positions. There's one position in here that's absolutely critical to the town's functioning in the years to come, and that's for the IT director. And I don't think you're talking about that at all. But, the important part to remember, by modifying the upper limit of that salary, we will hamper ourselves in our ability to capture the kind of IT director that we think we need. We've done market studies, in fact, the IT committee did a wonderful job, and they put together a multi-page presentation that's outside and, again, on the website, that explains why we came to that number. So, there are numbers in here that we're trying to, we're not trying to give everybody a lot of money. We're trying to stay competitive, because there is an attraction and retention issue for every community. And I know, I understand deeply the economic strains that this has put on everyone globally. But this is for us to remain competitive. It's not because we're overreaching, we're not trying to make sure people become fat cats doing municipal government work. We just want to make sure that we are competitive in our marketplace, and this will do precisely that.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Reed. I just, again, am concerned about, back when we did have a personnel board and this wasn't so much taken out of our hands as it appears to be now, we did, there was a bit more transparency and a bit more time to consider these things. It's unfortunate if the answer here is that by me trying to be, save this increase for a bigger conversation at a later date when it would seem more important, that I then am, you know, taking away our ability to get an IT person. That's my whole point here, is that this seems like it is a bigger conversation with some important things buried in this article. And to increase the caps, you know, if I can't, you can't not increase without doing away with the IT director, that's an unfortunate result, where my entire intention here is just to be cognizant of where we're headed and not, at this time, increase those top wages any more than they currently are, because I just don't think it's the time to do that. She wants to vote on the amendment.
I appreciate that. And exactly what is your amendment?
My amendment is to eliminate the increase in the maximum pay-
In the pay schedule, Amy? Just the pay schedule is what you're addressing in your amendment, correct?
Correct. Just the-
So, as we look at-
Yes, yes.
So, as we look at the warrant, and we look, starting on page nine, again, where we had the strikeout and larger numbers, you're saying we will, you want to see the strikeout restored, so we have the smaller numbers?
Correct.
Okay. And I think I've got that, and I think I understand it?
Are we including the hourly wages in there?
Yeah.
As part of this amendment, are you including hourly wages that are changing?
Well, that gets into a bigger conversation.
I know, but that's part of the-
I believe that the hourly minimum wages should increase. I don't agree, but I don't want to make, I don't want to get into that. I mean, if it's, if it's an easier thing to just keep the numbers the same as they were in previous year, then I am, I-
So, you're just talking salary caps, not hourly wages?
Correct.
Included and struck out in the article?
Correct.
Can I clarify that?
Mr. Reed has a response, and please, go ahead. Go ahead.
For the folks in the back?
For the folks in the back, what she's proposing is going with the strike-through language for the salaried employees that you see in the warrant. The hourly employees would still receive the proposed increase, which is underlined. Everybody hear me? Okay. Did I get that right, Amy?
Yes.
Thank you.
So as we look at, we look at the warrant, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second, sir. As I look at the warrant, your motion would take, if we're looking at page nine, pay grade 10 would, the maximum to be changed there, pay grade nine, the maximum would be changed there, pay grade eight on page 10, the maximum would be changed, or left the same. When I say change, it would be, would be no increase. Pay grade seven would stay at this, at the current number, pay grade six would stay, and then the rest of the items that are listed all appear to be hourly workers, and that would not change. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We, I now understand, I think we all understand what we're going to vote on. Sir, if you want to speak to the amendment, that's fine, otherwise, I'm, I think we're ready for a vote on the amendment.
Mr. Moderator?
You have the HR Director.
Jeannie Horn.
All right, Jeannie, I'm, I'm going to ask you to wait, and I'll take the gentleman over here first, and then we'll get to you.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington Street. So, what I don't understand, does this mean that every employee will now get the new maximum, or is there some small number of employees whose, in other words, what's the actual cost of this to the town? Is it minimal, or is it, or is it major?
Mrs. Horn.
So, I just.
Can, can you answer this gentleman's question?
Oh, I didn't hear it. Sorry.
Mr. Reed, you heard the question. Who's best, who, who do you want to call on to answer that question?
It's undeterminable at this point. We're doing this on the fly, so I, I can't give you an accurate figure of whether it will cost anybody, but seeing as it's a reduction, it would seem like it wouldn't cost as much as we would propose. By the way, I did want to comment on one thing. Two or three years ago, when we changed the way we deal with Article four, one of the things that was absolutely critical to us was how to make it more transparent, and in so doing, we now have a multi-step hearing process to amend any of these salaries. So, if in fact the voters decided to vote what we have presented here in the article, and said, okay, yes, we like the ceilings, we're going to go with that, before we make any changes to any of this, it goes through the Finance Committee first, and then it goes to the Board of Selectmen. So, we now run the gauntlet. We actually have public hearings, we invite the public in, so anytime we're making any changes to the personnel regulations beyond this, everybody has a chance to involve themselves in the conversation. I just wanted to point that out. That was one of the things that we, we thought was very important for the public, so that they could see what it is we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mrs. Horn.
Thank you, and I apologize for not hearing the question.
That's.
But to, and I understand what Ms. McNabb is trying to accomplish. What I would caution is that we need to be consistent with that amendment throughout the pay schedule for grades 10 through 1. Otherwise, we will risk salary compression. So if we are going to make a motion to amend the article, it needs to include all of the changes to the pay schedule for that entire compensation schedule, to exclude Schedule A, B, and R.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken McCarthy, 151 Flintlock Drive. I worked on the Finance Committee for a number of years here, and got to know many of the department heads, and Jeannie Horn, and the Personnel Department. I ask you to vote against this amendment. I think this plan was worked on very thoroughly. I know we need to have a competitive position to keep the final, Department Heads that we have, and we will not do that if we limit that, the schedule as proposed in this amendment. So please vote against this amendment.
Mrs. McNabb, did you have anything you wanted to say, and then I think we're ready for a vote.
Thank you. I, I did have a comment from another voter, that I, it is not my intention to do away, again, with the Chief Technology Officer, Officer position, and again, this, this amendment would only, would only go to the maximum amounts in the schedule, pay schedule, pace, for the contract employees, pay grades 10 through 1, 2, I don't see a 1, yeah, 1, and not affect the hourly rate employees. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mrs., Mrs. McNabb, so that we get this right, as, as I look at, I believe what we talked about before was going down through.
I was trying.
Pay grade six, which have salary ranges, and then pay grade five, four, three, two, and one, all have hourly wages. So are you now saying the hourly wages as well?
I'm not looking to change the hourly wages. My, my comment was trying to work with Ms. Horn's comment about being more specific. I think that's what she was asking me to be.
So are you now being specific through pay grade, do you want this to refer through pay grade six, or through pay grade one?
It is all the increases of the maximum, so the, so it just does not reflect the hourlies. It's only the salaried positions, and not to affect the hourly compensated employees.
So that being the case, I believe the amendment would be, and your amendment, I just want to make sure we interpret it correctly. You want to deal with pay grade 10, 9, 8, 7, 6? At that point, we would stop, because the other pay grades are hourly wages?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Quigley.
Peter Quigley, 32 Long Point Lane. I'd like to just emphasize our HR Director's opinion that this activity would discriminate against a very small percentage of our town employees. Most of our town employees have the benefit of union representation and union contracts. I think this is ill-advised to single a very small number. I think you mentioned it was going to affect potentially 80 employees. The top of the range would affect a much smaller number than 80. They are some of the most valuable and important employees to our town. To remove the discretion from our town manager by taking an action like this at Town Meeting, I think is just not in the best interest. I think it is unfairly discriminating against a small number of employees that don't have the benefit of union contracts, and I'd encourage all of my fellow members of our community to vote against this amendment.
Well, and that, I think we're now ready for a vote?
Can I add one more comment? I just want the public to understand that the way the amendment is worded, we are going to have subordinate employees making more than their supervisors. This change needs to be made in an equitable way across the compensation system. So the proposal will create inequity amongst our compensation system, and it will be very difficult to manage.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Raise your hand if you're ready for a vote. I see a sea of hands. We are going to vote on the amendment, which would create, use last year's maximum, I think we're all clear on what that is. Then we will come back and vote, vote on the main motion, which actually funds this. So, all those in favor of Mrs. McNabb's amendment, please raise your hand. All those opposed, overwhelmingly, the amendment fails here. If that's the same in the, in Mr. Wyler's room, then we can move forward, otherwise we'll have a hand count.
Mr. Moderator, the amendment fails in Room 2.
Amendment fails. We are now back to the main motion.
Okay.
Please. I.
Put up the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Please stand on the X.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to make a request that you not announce the vote in this room when they're still making a vote in that room, because it would tend to affect what was happening in the room next door. And I would also appreciate some clear guidelines when, regarding the fact that this is such an unusual situation, and I know we're required to wear masks in here, but it does inhibit people speaking, and is it okay to speak at a mic without a mask, or is that in violation? Could we just have a few guidelines and rules about how we're to conduct ourselves today in this unusual situation?
Well, that's, that's a wonderful question. I have a private microphone, so I'm without a mask, but Mr. Reed, do you have a? I believe our, our health agent is in the middle school gym. If Ms. Mayo could come in, we have a few questions for her. Wonderful questions, thank you.
And, and also about not announcing what our vote is here to the other room.
I appreciate your comment, and I, and I will do that. Having said that.
Thank you.
If we were all together in one big room, we could see people's hands go up. I'm not sure that people have been particularly at a disadvantage, but again, it was not my intention to create an advantage or disadvantage. Please.
Oh.
Mrs. Mayo, please, our, our health agent. And the specific question is, on the boom microphone, should people be wearing masks, or, or is it okay to not?
Hi, my name's Tracy Mayo. I'm the health agent. If we are all sharing the same microphone, you have to wear your mask on here. Those of you that have your individual microphone, no one else is using it, that's different, okay? I know it's hard to hear. If people could speak up, that would help us in the other room as well, but because we're sharing and we have no way to clean that in between, you do need to wear your mask. Okay?
Thank you. So I think we were about to take a vote? Please.
Hello?
A question on the main motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Colleen Brer, Tobey Garden Street. Now that it was brought up that one of the underlined and emboldened job descriptions was in addition, I was just curious, there seemed to be 10. Are all of those new, or are they just moving between pay grades? I was just curious, and if they are new, I guess a little description would be nice, if we're adding positions through this.
Mr. Reed, I think has an answer for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The new position is the Chief Technology Officer. The others are refinements of existing positions, as to whether or not they were in another category, and they might have been moved from one to another, or changing the job title, or updating the job description to be more modern, if you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have another question?
Yes. Hello, Thomas Nie from 590 Bay Road. Would you please repeat the main motion, and what is the dollar amount?
Would you like me to re-read?
Yeah, Mrs. Sullivan, please read the main motion.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $115,575 to implement the personnel policy and provide funding for any other salary or compensation not addressed by the personnel policy as printed in the warrant, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $111,475, and transfer the sum of $4,100 from water retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Second. Okay?
So I think, I think we're all clear on what the motion is, and thank you. It's been a while since it was first read, and now I think we're ready for a vote. And if you're in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? And the voting is complete in the main gym?
It is complete in Room 2.
Oh, so the motion carries in the main gym with four people opposed?
Motion carries in Room 2 with two people opposed.
Very good. Article 5. And this is, this is the town budget. Before we start on Article 5, Mrs. Sullivan from the Finance Committee has a few remarks to be made.
Typically, in other years, I've given, you know, my speech on what has happened, I think we're all painfully aware of the fact that this year is quite different from any other year that we have. Those of you that know me and have heard me speak at earlier meetings, know my position on spending free cash or stabilization to maintain operating funds, and I've, I've been quite vocal. I would never have anticipated that we would be funding our operations the way we are in the following motions that you will hear. It is extraordinary times, and we are going to be faced with an ongoing review of the monies as they come in. We did the best that we could. I'd like to take a moment to compliment John Adams, our Finance Director, who has worked 24/7 in trying to get us some accurate revisions to our revenue expectations, keep us surprised of what monies could be available through the CARES Act, and to give us some potential solutions on reductions in certain line items that would still give us some flexibility. What we have decided to do, with your permission, is we are going to be working on a quarterly basis with the town manager, the finance director, and the selectman, and reviewing updates, as Mr. Adams can provide, on revenues, on expenditures, on actuals, so that we are continually monitoring the FY '21 budget while, oh, by the way, we're trying to craft FY '22. Those meetings are going to be public meetings. We will then devote a single meeting at the end of each quarter within, I would say probably two weeks of quarter end, and review what, where we are and any revisions that we have to make. We fully expect that when we meet again in March, hopefully in a more normalized setting, that we will be entertaining further revisions to this budget to adapt to the real, the actual, including revenues, CARES Act, and expenditures, and what that means as far as program decreases, program adjustments, and working with the schools. We are going to be voting a budget today that, in this climate, I hesitate to say this, but you're going to have to trust us. You're going to have to trust us, but trust and verify. And I invite all of you to, to be aware, to sit with us at these quarterly meetings, understand what's going on, where money is being spent, and where money can be saved as the year goes on. These are extraordinary times. I thank each and every one of you for coming today, because we could not proceed without you being here today to keep the town running and provide services that we all need. And I, I say that with sincerity from the bottom of my heart. You're very brave, and I think it says so much about this town that you're all here, and how much we all care. So as we go through Article 5, please know you're going to be hearing these numbers again, and we will be revisiting, and Rainey, John, and the selectmen will be part and parcel of those conversations, and we will get them out to you via, if it's, if it's Zoom, if it's filmed, however, we can get the information out to you. So thank you again, and, you know, we'll, we're all dancing as fast as we can, I guess. Thank you. you.
Mr. Reed, I think you had some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to thank you all for being here today. My comments will be brief. I actually did prepare a couple of pages of written documentation, which is out front. It's also on the town's website. I encourage you to read it. It kind of gives the perspective of where we were 143 days ago to this moment. My primary focus here isn't to give you soliloquy on the budget. Like I said, you can read it yourselves, and we'll be referring to the budget sheet. It's that Big 11 by 17 that was out there. I want you all to get a copy of it because that's what we'll be going through in a few minutes. The moderator's going to tell you that because you're going to see the amendments that we've made. But what I do want to do is I need to thank a couple people. I want to offer my thanks to the Board of Selectmen, of course, and the Finance Committee for their continued support, encouragement, and direction throughout this process. I want to thank the Fiscal Advisory Committee, the School Committee, and all of our volunteer board and committee members who serve our community so well. They are to be commended for their tireless efforts. Additionally, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of our department heads and their staff for their hard work and dedication. And I want to let them know that I appreciate all of their efforts. I'm proud and honored to work alongside such a talented group of people, and you all have my sincerest gratitude. I want to especially thank Dr. Antonucci for always lending an ear in the midst of a truly surreal year. He and I have almost daily conversations these days, and it usually begins off with some kind of strange maniacal laughter, and then we launch into whatever it is we have to talk about. But on that note, I want to say that I think the partnership between the town and the school is probably the strongest that it's been in the seven years I've been here, and you are part of that. And I want to thank the man to my left, John Adams, who still manages to show up with a smile on his face and brings his fine, dry sense of humor and his razor-sharp financial acumen each day. And what you have in your hands is the byproduct of that. Thank you so much for all of your help and your creative ideas. You've done a good job here trying to dig us out of this mess, and I really appreciate it. I also want to thank all of you. It's been a weird year, but we'll get through it. We will get through it. And I want to, I think you all deserve a round of applause. It's funny. I always get choked up at these things, and the department heads all laugh at me, and they say, "When are you going to get emotional?" Well, this is when I get emotional, because this is tough. This is a different year. But it will get better. There will become a vaccine, and we will meet in the pack again someday, and I look forward to it. So, thank you all.
Very good. Before we start, when you came in, you may have seen these large sheets. This is the current budget. Again, we're dealing with a warrant that was printed for a March town meeting, and so the numbers are somewhat different. When we refer to numbers, they will not be the numbers in the warrant. They'll be the line items that are on this large sheet. If you don't currently have one and want one, please grab one from the outside, although I see many of them here. We will be voting the general budget with multiple motions. The first motion that will come up will deal with the funding of it, the use of free cash and stabilization money. And then we will deal with, as we have in the past, with the budget as separate consideration, which means we will vote a number which is for the general government, then we'll vote a number for the schools. At that point, both budgets are still open if changes need to be made. And then we will vote a final budget in the final motion. Then we'll deal with the enterprise fund separately. So having said that- Look at me. Did you, Mr. Adams, before we start, I think has some comments he'd like to make, our finance director on the budget itself and how it was put together.
I just wanted clarification, which some of you have already, some clarification that some of you have already done, going from the Finance Committee's first approval on March 14th, which appears in your warrant, and then follow through with that long sheet that takes you to the Finance Committee's recommendation posted in the warrant. We have a couple of motions. We have a motion because of the fact that if we utilize monies from stabilization, a rainy day fund, we have to have a two-thirds vote. So the first motion is just voting to withdraw monies from stabilization to help defray the costs of the budget. Once we have that approval, the following motions will utilize those, that funding source in the following motions for the town budget as well as the school budget. There are also in the second motion, there's lots of different funding sources. Free cash and stabilization are not line-specific. They can be used to defray the cost. The only reason the line items are listed for all the other funding sources is because of the statute that's used for those funding sources need to be for specific items. So that's why there's specific line items listed out for those. But free cash and stabilization funding is not required to be listed out specifically to line items. I think that's pretty much it.
That's it? All right. So now I will, Mrs. Sullivan, I will take a motion for Article five, motion one, use of stabilization fund.
I move that the town vote to transfer $750,000 from general stabilization to fund the general operation of the town as follows. $300,000 for general town operating budget and $450,000 for school operating budget. Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I believe we have a question over here. So let the discussion begin. Please, sir.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington Street. So my question is on the transfers of monies out of the stabilization fund. I understand from Mr. Reed's summary that this will maintain the 5% recommended or policy recommended minimum of the fund. But I do have the question. Our policy states that if and when the town draws monies from the stabilization fund, the town shall present a plan for replenishing the fund. I would like to hear that plan. Currently-
Mr. Moderator.
So I don't want the discussion to get too far afield, but having said that, I think that this is a reasonable question to say how it's being used and how it will be used in the future. So please.
Right. First of all, the policy calls for between 5% to 10% of stabilization, excuse me, the stabilization fund should be 5% to 10% of our general fund operating expenditures, less exempt debt. Using $750,000 for reasons, it will not have us fall below the 5%. So if we keep to not falling below 5%, we don't need a plan to replenish it. It's only if we fall below our policy minimum. So that's why we're trying to stay within the 5%, 10% first. If we should have to subsequently go into dipping into stabilization for, say, fiscal '22 budget, at that point, we should have a plan developed so that we have a plan in the future to fund the stabilization, whether it be through specific funding sources to go directly into stabilization or some other means.
Before you ask a follow-up question, I want to see if there's anybody else who wishes to be heard. Seeing nobody, please have your question.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington. Respectfully, that's not actually what the policy seems to read. Maybe that was the intent of the policy. But I think it's still a good question. So do we have a plan to bring it back up for the future? Or at this point, are we not able to make any plans?
I would say at this point in time, we are unable to make those plans. I hate to say that, but I think we all know it's true.
Okay. Sir, if you'll identify yourself, please.
Yes. Hello, Thomas Nie, 590 Bay Road. I just would like to know the current balance of the fund. And when you say 5% to 10%, are you talking about the total operating budget of $84 million?
It's the total operating budget, but that $84 million includes exempt debt, which it's roughly $7.2 million of exempt debt, so that's backed off. Okay? We have, in our stabilization account today, we have over nearly $5.2 million, or about 7% of our general fund expenditures. The balance, if we approve Article five with this motion, we would be at $4.4 million, or about 6% of general fund expenditures.
John? Hello?
Thank you. This screen is just in the wrong place.
Is it?
I'm sorry. I meant that to be, I recognize you. Please ask your question.
Hi, Colleen Brer, Toby Garden Street. I may be jumping ahead here, and I don't know, but I was looking at the Fiscal Advisory Committee's report, and they say next year we're going to have $837,000 rolling off our debt. Do we have plans for that already? Or is that something we would be anticipating using for the stabilization?
Unfortunately, that money that's rolling off is exempt debt. That cannot be put back in the budget because that's voted specifically for that debt, so it lowers your tax levy when that falls off.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I'm going to ask for a vote. This is a two-thirds vote. And so if we don't have a clear two-thirds call, we will have to hand count it. All those in favor of the use of stabilization in the operating budget as presented in Article one, Article five, motion one, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Mr. Wyler, let us know when you're finished voting.
We have finished voting, sir.
And the vote is?
We voted unanimously to approve.
And it was unanimous vote in this room as well as the motion carries. We're now on to the budget itself.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan, motion number two for Article five.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $43,212,284 as the general fund operating budget of the town as printed in the omnibus budget FY21 final 72820, as found in the lobby, in lines 1 through 78 and lines 81 through 92, for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $41,387,894, and to transfer the sum of $1,824,390, of which $84,025 shall come from the Waterways Improvement Fund to fund lines 38 and 39. $121,372 shall come from the Water Enterprise Fund revenue, four lines 13, 43, 81, 82, 83, and 84. $303,475 shall come from the PEG Access Fund revenue for line 20. $213,700 shall come from the Pension Reserve Fund for line 84. $389,125 shall come from the Fund Balance Bond Premium for line 88. $14,720,000 shall come from the Sale of Real Estate Fund for line 88. $397,973,000 shall come from free cash, and $300,000 shall come from stabilization to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
So are we going to read the budget, or?
Are there any questions on any of the line items? You have the budget in front of you. I don't mean to stifle debate, but, but. Please.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington Street. On public safety, police, are there any vehicles in, are there any vehicles in those line items?
Do we have an answer for?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Reed?
The answer is yes. There are the lease of three police vehicles in that line item.
It seems to me important that all vehicles be included as the fleet advisor, as the fleet study indicated, in capital expenditures, so they can be looked at as a whole rather than considered as part of operating expenditures.
Thank you. I do understand that argument. In fact, I won't say it's an argument, but it's a discussion that I've actually had with the committee that drafted that language. And in years past, in other experiences, not here in Duxbury, actually here in Duxbury, but prior to my arrival, there were moments in time when police cruisers were put in capital budgets, and when things got tight, tighter than now, or in some cases, those police vehicles weren't funded. And as a result, the police cruisers that were in those capital expenditures weren't purchased. And so the police department was left sort of over a barrel without new cars. In this case, what we did, well, actually, what the police chief Clancy did a few years ago was take the leases for those vehicles and put them in the operating budget as a sort of an insulation, if you will, to make sure that the cuts that would be needed wouldn't be police cruisers, because they are frontline service vehicles. It's a discussion that I've had with, again, with the committee. And because that document, that fleet advisory committee document is advisory at this point, we thought we'd test it out for a year and see if it works. The Finance Committee and I have discussed this. I think there are some members there that agree with it, some that don't, and that's okay. But this is the way we've been funding it for at least the last seven or eight years, and it seems to be working out pretty well, particularly since these are leases and not outright purchases.
I'm going to ask the gentleman behind you to have his comment first.
Hello, Thomas Nie, 590 Bay Road. This is a very complex motion, and I have more of a request than a question. I think I picked up all of the handouts. I think it would be very helpful to have those complex motions, or all of the motions, printed and available for people to read. I found it online on the annual town meeting page, but it's just, I don't really like reading long things on my phone, so.
There are copies available up front.
There are.
Everything's up.
Thank you.
In the outer, in the hallway, there were copies of the warrants for the special town meeting we had this morning, the annual town meeting, and the noontime special. And then we, copies of all the motions were there as well, as well as being available online. But it is a lot, it's a lot to digest. I give you that. Mrs. McNabb?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to echo the previous speaker's concerns. Typically, we go through, and I understand this is extraordinary times, and I'm not trying to extend this town meeting one more moment longer than we need to, but I'm all about trying to save money, and especially during these times, we need to be pinching every penny. So I think if we could request that the Finance Committee give us, kind of, go look back to their article, to their votes, and maybe cull out any expenditures that they grappled with, or thought maybe this could have been IPed, if there's anything glaring. I mean, we just don't have that type of detail in this spreadsheet, and we normally- I mean, we just don't have that type of detail in this spreadsheet, and we normally do go through quite a bit of consideration about this very large amount of money that we are being asked to appropriate.
Amy? We did have a second bite at the apple, as far as revisiting our votes for March. These are, if you look at the columns, you can see that there are some reductions, and that is why I had, I started this by addressing the fact that we are doing these budgets and amending these budgets based on projecting revenues and monies from the state and federal government, of which we have no hard facts, which is why we're going to be doing quarterly reviews and adjustments as we proceed. I agree with you, I hear you, as far as the cars being capital, or the cars being not capital. As Rainey has said, we have discussed that, and we have indicated that we will be pursuing that as an item of discussion for FY22 as well, with fiscal advisory. So that is not going to be just, you know, played forward in '22 as well, but we are now, you know, several months into '21, and just trying to grapple with what we can do now. But I do hear you, and I would hope that folks would stay engaged as we do these quarterly reviews. At the very worst case, you'll be hearing from us in an update in March when we come back. We are also, as my understanding, there will be several special town meetings in the fall, just out of necessity, as numbers unfold, and we will be discussing any adjustments at that point in time. So I hear you, and I'm absolutely happy to read this, and whatever is the will of town meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I don't necessarily think, were there any controversial votes in which the Finance Committee, any expenditures, any increases, any items being considered that were of note, and maybe something that town meeting really needs to take a moment and grapple with?
We really didn't increase. We did mostly decreases. We made recommendations on capital based on revisiting the requests from department heads, as to what could be delayed for a year, being mindful that if it was an essential piece of equipment, we're only kicking the can down the road, because if it was scheduled to be replaced this year, and we wait a year, it's really going to be scheduled to be replaced along with things that would ordinarily come up in '22. We are, I think maybe areas of concern, I, you know, there have been years that the Finance Committee and the School Committee did not agree on things. I am very happy to report that that climate has changed dramatically. John and Katie have been so wonderful and so helpful in working with us, but there are things that they don't know, as far as, you know, will there be additional expenses to kids with ed plans because of how services need to be delivered? How will services be delivered? What's going to happen with the buses? If we're, if the buses need to be doubled because of the number of kids that can be allowed on a bus, what does that do to their bottom line? So we are working with them. We're more concerned about items such as that, as opposed to anything that we cut. We went to every department head again. We asked what could be delayed. There were some that were easy, because you're not going to provide some of those. The pool's been closed for the summer. Obviously, that was a reduction. But what is it going to cost to open some of these things again with requirements that are necessary? We had to put some money into providing safe environments for where our employees come back to work. You know, it had to be done. We truly vetted it, but I can't say enough, we are going to have to continue to look at every line item on a quarterly basis to make sure we're doing what we need to do to keep our employees and the community safe, and in order to provide essential services. We prioritized essential over nice, which was not a popular conversation, because if you're an advocate for a department or a program that is considered a nice-to-have, not an essential, our mindset was that education and public safety were, and obviously, I always use the expression having the buses run on time, but being able to pay our bills, being able to collect money owed to us. These were considered essential, and we looked at those with a different mindset than other departments. The library came back, and they reduced a lot of monies and gave back to the town, and we, the library director was fabulous to work with. So people are really trying, and we will continue to keep an eye on it. It is a bizarre time in our history. We do thank you for that.
We have a question over here?
Hi, yes. Colleen Brer, Toby Gardens Street. I know in the past you have recommendations. Well, I guess I should start with, so are we to understand that every single vote on the Finance Committee was unanimous? Is that accurate or not?
No, but I would say the majority were.
Because I know that sometimes, you know, it's not just voting to take money away, but it's also voting, people, the dissenting vote might be, they need more money. So I just was curious, in the past, any of the dissenting votes, we've had at least somebody discuss why they did not vote with the rest of the committee, so we could understand ourselves, geez, they thought the library needed more money. Why, you know, why did they vote that way? So that would be nice, again, if we could hear dissenting opinions when you don't vote unanimously. And the other thing is, I know you have the recommendations printed in here, and I know the budget's a large thing, but I do know that you do it by department, so it would maybe be nice to see the recommendation votes by the Finance Committee by department, at least.
I don't disagree, and that was, you know, available for the first go-round.
Yep.
We have been meeting through the summer and going through the line items.
Yep.
I will tell you that, and other members of the committee, Jerry, you're, you know, you're the corporate knowledge here, and Kathleen, the votes were by and large unanimous because...
Yeah. You discuss them all.
So there really was not any heavy debate. I think any debate was surrounding how we will approach those departments and our procedures for '22.
Yep.
As I had said before, we don't know what we don't know right now.
Exactly.
So we have a budget in front of us that we feel we can manage with John Adams and, you know, kind help on that. And again, I go back to, we are going to be doing quarterly reviews.
Okay. Thank you.
And to keep up with it, and to make sure that we are, we are in cahoots, and we do not overs, we're not going to overspend. We can't overspend.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a vote yet?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. It's been a while. I've lost track of the motion. This is Article Five, Motion Number Two. This is for the general budget. It's a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
Thank you.
We have a vote in the main gym, Mr. Wyler. Let us know when you voted and what you have for a vote.
We have completed the vote, Mr. Moderator, and we have a majority vote.
And we have a vote in here that was unanimous, the motion carries. Article Five, Motion Number Three.
School operating budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of thirty-seven million, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars as the general fund school operating budget, for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-six million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, transfer the sum of two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars from free cash, and four-hundred-and-fifty thousand from stabilization fund, to be expended under the direction of the School Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Do we have any questions? I see no questions here in the main gym. And so I will call for, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of Motion Four, which is the school budget, raise your hand. All those opposed? Mr. Wyler, we have a vote here in the main gym?
Moderator, we have a vote.
And would you share with us what it was?
Room Two voted in affirmative.
And we had a unanimous vote here in the main gym, the motion carries. In order to wrap up and make this budget official, we have one final motion, which I had mentioned before, which ties it all together. We're not asking you to increase or decrease or change the use of anything that you've already done, it's just to affirm that, in fact, that's what we're doing because of the way we consider the article. Mrs. Sullivan?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars as the operating budget of the town, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty, exclusive of the Water Department and the Water Department Debt Service, for the purposes and in the amounts specified in the motions previously voted under this Article Five, and to meet this appropriation and transfer the sum of one million, three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, in accordance with the transfers voted in motions previously voted under this Article Five. General fund, do you want me to read with the general fund and school budget total?
Might as well, it's two lines.
Yeah, honestly. Motion One, general fund, raise, four-one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four, transfers one million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety, for a total appropriation of forty-three million, two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Motion Two, school budget, thirty-six million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, with transfers of seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars, for a total appropriation of thirty-seven million, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three. Total, eighty million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety, to raise and appropriate, transfer a total of one million, three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, for a total appropriation of eighty million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Mr. Moderator, one correction. The total amount raised, that actually adds to seventy-eight million, one-sixty-three, two-eighty-eight, and that's the correct figure.
Say that again, Mr.?
Oh, you're right.
It adds to seventy-eight million, one-sixty-three, two-eighty-eight.
In what line are we talking about?
Under raise.
Under raise.
Under raise?
The total.
Total is not eighty million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars, but instead it's how much?
Seventy-eight million, one-sixty-three, two-eighty-eight.
Two-eighty-eight, but the total, grand total is accurate?
Yep.
Okay.
The total appropriation is accurate.
Total appropriation is accurate.
Thank you, John.
Yep. Well, I'm going to call for a vote at this point.
Yeah, that wasn't added right to it.
All right. I believe we have another modification coming. Yeah?
Yeah, that should be two million, five forty-seven, three forty-nine.
Oh, we subtracted instead of, no.
So if you're following along in your motions, Article Five, the bottom of the page, Article Five, Motion Four, the bottom of the page, listed the amount raised, which is taxation, transfers, which is from other available funds. Both those numbers were incorrect. Going over it, the raise amount, correcting from wrong, Mr. Adams, is seventy-eight million, one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. The transfer amount is two million, five-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand... Is it nine forty-nine?
Three forty-nine.
Three forty-nine. For a total, total hasn't changed, eighty million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars?
That's correct.
Okay.
No, it's not. No, wait. Transfers, okay, right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so the one in writing...
Pardon us as we talk amongst ourselves.
Yeah, so the two bold amounts in writing need to be changed, too, in the motion.
Okay. Does anybody need an explanation, or are you ready for a vote? I'm going to take that you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Mr. Wyler, we have a vote here.
Moderator, we have a vote.
And we have had a unanimous vote here, and you, sir?
We have unanimous vote also.
Motion carries. We now have an operating budget for the town of Duxbury for fiscal '21. We have a few other votes to take. We have a Water Enterprise Fund. As you may know, the Water Department is handled as a separate entity, has its own separate budget, is supported by user fees, and so, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion? Article Five, Motion Five.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of two million, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars from Water Enterprise Fund revenue, for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and further, that one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars be raised from Water Enterprise Fund revenue to fund indirect costs associated with the Water Enterprise Fund appropriated in the general fund as identified in Article Five, Motion One, to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and my sense is people are getting up to leave not to ask questions, but if you're interested in a question, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of Article Five, Motion Five, for the Water Enterprise Fund, raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Mr. Wyler, we have a vote in the gym.
Moderator, we have a vote in Room Two.
We had a unanimous vote here, and you, sir?
We have a unanimous vote also.
Motion carries. Article Six, which is the capital budget?
Yes. General government capital budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of five-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars as the general government capital budget of the town, for the purposes and in the amounts specified as follows, and to meet said appropriation, transfer five-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, of which five-hundred-and-forty-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars shall come from free cash, and thirty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars shall come from Waterways Improvement Receipts Fund, to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or debate? We have a question? I believe we have a comment.
Candace Martin from Fiscal Advisory. We want to put a hold on two of the items to provide further clarification as to the votes from Fiscal Advisory. On line item five, pool safety platform, and then on item, sorry, I just need to grab the... I'll just cover that one now, because there was another hold that I can talk to under the... under the Water Department, the Enterprise Fund.
The Water Department Enterprise Fund has already been voted.
Got it.
So let's deal with the pool sa-
For the pool safety platform?
Platform.
I'm sorry, should I continue?
I was just going to, if you're following along, it is the pool safety rooftop platform in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Correct. It was, the pool safety platform was originally proposed as a two-phase, two-year project. When the Fiscal Advisory evaluated the program, its access on the pool roof platform for maintenance and the roof is to elevation, the larger HVAC unit is up at the raised second, higher roof level. There was maintenance issues in, or access issues to maintain the equipment safely, and we understand that it was a safe, unsafe practice for them to continue to do so. We recommended immediate solutions that would be commercially available, OSHA-rated work platforms that would allow them to get access and to work safer. Those are commercially available and are suitable for roof maintenance. They would be available in four to six weeks instead of having a program that extended over two years to get a work platform. Since that time, the program has changed from requesting only funds for half of the project, but to request the full funds, and we understand that there will be a platform added. We want consideration to make sure that we're looking at available options that are OSHA-rated and commercially available. We also were requesting that access from the lower grade, a caged ladder is needed to safely access even the lower roof, and that we want that considered. Our recommendation was to put a caged ladder from grade level as well as to purchase two of the commercially available work platforms to resolve that immediately. So just to explain, our recommendation for ten thousand instead of the eighty thousand for the work platform.
So are you providing that as information or requesting an amendment? Please?
Line five.
Is there an action you'd like this meeting, or an action you wouldn't like this meeting to take?
I'm sorry, we put a hold on that line item. Since we didn't read each line item, I just wanted to clarify what was in the published document. We are not changing the motion at this time.
Okay.
We know that the department will do the right thing and evaluate the options. Money should be appropriated for evaluating this.
Thank you.
Mary Lynn Carson, 21 Washington. I just wanted to put a hold on line item six and ask for clarification and a description of why the upgrade and so forth.
And that is the digital police radios?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an upgrade, I understand, but I wanted more clarification about that.
Understandable. Can somebody provide an answer?
So this was presented by the public safety folks. The radios can be either digital or analog, I think are the two most common words, and we are unable at this time to communicate with other towns that have the upgraded radios. So if I've, we've got a policeman in Marshfield being one of the contiguous towns that has the upgraded radios. If we have officers that are responding either to assist in Marshfield, or Marshfield is responding in Duxbury to assist, which happens on a fairly, I won't say regular, but certainly not unusual basis, they cannot communicate without going through a third party. So it was considered to be a safety issue for the officers and a safety issue for whatever event was being addressed because minutes matter, and it is also the future. All departments are converting to this, so it's not a situation that's going to get better or be eliminated in the future. It's a situation that's going to become more and more common that we cannot communicate and meet with real time with our partners from other towns.
I believe we have a question to my right.
I'm just trying to clarify. We're voting on the Finance Committee recommendations, so only the numbers that appear in that column are the ones we're considering, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Finance Committee, just to clarify the issue with the platform for the pool HVAC. When the HVAC system was first installed, they should have put a platform, work platform or around it. It is greater than four feet. Anybody working without restraint, full restraint, in excess of four feet, they stand the chance of having a fatal accident, all right? So it's really important that that platform, should have been installed in the first place, as well as a caged ladder to reach that platform. So Brian Cherry has recommended an appropriation of eighty thousand dollars to install the platform, to install the caged ladder system, and that was why we went along with our recommendation and support it. I think the Fiscal Advisory, they feel is a different way of approaching it, but we recommend that Brian Cherry do the job and appropriate the full amount.
Any other questions or comments on motion for general government capital? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. Mr. Wyler, please let us know when you voted in your room.
We have a vote, sir.
We had a unanimous vote in the main gym.
We have a unanimous vote in room two.
Motion carries. Article VI, motion two.
Sorry.
School capital budget.
No, no, I know. I've got too many papers. Too many pieces of paper, John. Article VI, motion two. I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars as the school capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars from free cash to be expended under the direction of the school committee. Second.
Are there any questions? I think we have a question.
Mary Lynn Carson, 21 Washington. I just wondered if our superintendent perhaps could speak to exceptional expenses that might be capital expenses that could possibly come up because of the pandemic, if that would be appropriate at this time.
I'm not sure it is appropriate. It sounds like the sort of thing I'd expect to go to the school committee meeting. We're here to vote the budget, and so it's somewhat outside the scope.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, any other questions? Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A quick question on these items where they're the school budget, not the town's operating budget, and the school ends up with the control of the money. My question is that for some of these expenses, they're a very round number, seventeen thousand for musical instruments or carpeting. My question is, if in the event that the amount of money that is appropriated is not spent, the full amount, let's say we get a good deal on carpet or instruments and it's several thousand dollars less or a hundred dollars less, does the money come back to the town's operating budget, or does it stay within the school system?
Mr. Adams, I think you're probably best versed to answer that question.
Yeah, money's appropriated under Article VI have to be spent for that purpose. If they are not used for that purpose, at some point when there is no longer the, when they can no longer spend the rest of the funds, it gets returned as free cash.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I'll ask for a vote on the capital budget for the schools. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. Mr. Wyler, we have a vote here. We had a unanimous vote here in the main gym.
Yeah, we have a unanimous vote in room two.
Motion carries. Article VI, motion three. We touched on this a little while ago, and this is the digital radios for the police department. We're now going to deal with the funding of the digital radios for the police department. Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars as the general government capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below for digital radio communication, and to meet said appropriation, transfer eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars from free cash and borrow the sum of three hundred thousand to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and further, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sums pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore, and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have a question, sir?
Yes, Thomas Knee, 590 Bay Road. I see in the previous two motions under Article VI that we used free cash. So the first question I have is, does that, and we used eighty thousand in free cash for this motion, does that finish off our free cash for the year? And my second question is, we're borrowing the three hundred thousand. I'm sure you've looked into leasing or other options and how to pay for this. I'm just curious, why would it be advantageous to borrow for, I'd like to know how long the loan or the bond is for for this item? It just seems like this is a small enough item that it could be handled under the operating budget with lease payments.
Mr. Adams.
I'd almost agree with you at this point in time. If we go back to March, we had a sizable amount, we were pretty much using all of our free cash at that time. So in order to fit this in, which was a very important public safety project, the only way to do it was to borrow the money. I am not changing that now, and that's because the schools and towns have applied for a grant in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand. So if that, if they got the grant, we'd have a local share of one hundred and fourteen, nine twenty, which would take care of this, so we wouldn't have to borrow it at all. We'd probably short-term borrow the one hundred and fifteen and pay that over maybe two or three years.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Because this involves borrowing, it will be a two-thirds vote. So we've had a string of unanimous votes. I hope we keep that up. All those in favor, please raise their hand. All those opposed. Mr. Wyler, we have a vote here. Unanimous vote here in the main gym. And you, sir?
Not unanimous, but we do have a two-thirds vote.
Then I declare a two-thirds vote. The motion carries. Article VI, motion number four, the Water Enterprise Fund.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars as the Water Enterprise Fund capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Second. Water, there's only three things.
Yeah, please.
Water main rehabilitation. There was, we recommended zero. There was enough money left over from previous years that had not been spent yet that we felt as though this could be delayed for a year. Replace a three-quarter ton utility truck, fifty thousand, forty dollars. Replace truck three, ninety-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one, for the total of one forty-six, one sixty-one.
I believe we have a question.
Hi, John.
Mr. Chin on the right-hand side, please.
Alex Chin, Chair of Fiscal Advisory, Plantation Drive. Fiscal Advisory did not vote line 34, the ninety-six thousand, one twenty-one. This is actually an add-to fleet. This is a truck that would be used to maintain the small amount of sewer system within the town. Currently, they're using another truck to do that. They clean the equipment. This truck would get used six times a year to service the sewer system, and that's why Fiscal Advisory did not vote for this truck.
The Finance Committee was persuaded to support this as the same truck was going to be used to maintain the sewer system and do work on the water mains. We did not feel comfortable having the same equipment used for those different purposes.
Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Where the Water Department is a revenue generating department, does not the revenue from the water pay for these type of expenses? And this is more of a bookkeeping thing where we're just moving money, or are these expenses not covered by the revenue that we get from the water?
Mr. Adams.
Well, they are, they're covered under the water fund as an enterprise fund, also has its free cash, just like the general fund does. So this is coming out of the, as we do pay for most of our capital out of free cash, this comes out of the water fund's free cash. So in a ways, yes, the water rates do wind up paying for it.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. Mr. Wyler, we have a vote. Please let me know when you-
Sir? Room two voted affirmative.
As did the main gym, we had two opposed. I declare the motion carries. At noon time, we need to stop to deal with the other special town meeting of the day. And so we've been at this solidly for two hours and 55 minutes. I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess so people can get settled, and at noon time we will reconvene and move to the special town meeting. Thank you. Thank you.